How's your microphone? Sound better? No, it's still crazy.
Doing the muddy system.
Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, June 11th. First agenda item is roll call.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Here.
Knod?
Here.
Chancet?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Whoa?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Euer? Serone?
Here.
And McFadden.
Okay, we have necessary quorum for tonight. Reminder to please speak into the microphone for the BATV recordings. If you do come up and use the microphone at the podium, please make sure that you can hear yourself in the background. Item number three is approved minutes for May 21st, 2019. Anybody have any questions, comments? Not? Can I get a motion?
No movement.
Second? Motion by Chancet, second by Salvati. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Number four is items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything tonight?
No.
No changes? Okay. Moving right along then, we will go to matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda tonight. Anybody from the public for anything not on the agenda? On up.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
My name is... Is that better? My name's Gav Amelie. I'm with Lodi Tap House out in Maple Park. I think, if I'm not mistaken, some of my partners couldn't be here today, so they asked me to come on their behalf. I'm just here to introduce ourselves. We intend on doing a pop-up beer garden at the old Pal Joey's building, which my business partner's family owns during the week of Windmill Fest. Did I say that right? Windmill Fest? Okay. And we are partnering with a brewery that we're kind of keeping secret for surprise aspect of it. We are not using any facility. We're just going to be on the patio. We've already been in touch with King County Health Department to meet all their requirements. We're going to be coming to you guys, but I just wanted to introduce ourselves, see if there's any questions. I had no idea how many there were of you, so I didn't bring enough business cards to pass out, but just wanted to open up, plan to communication in case you guys have any questions for us once you see the request come through.
Okay. So you're just going to apply for a liquor license for that one event?
Yep. But we kind of like to have a face and a voice to the idea and the name of things.
Just move into that building and...
Yeah, well, like I said, one of my business partner's families already owns the building, so we have approval to use the building. Yeah, halfway there. So if you guys have any questions, it was literally just, go ahead.
Yeah, have you ever done a pop-up like this before?
Yep, this will be our fifth or sixth one. We've done them locally. We actually have an event coming up in Maple Park on the 29th of this month, so we're pretty familiar with the process. Between our staff and the brewery staff, we should have pretty much all the bases covered, so we're really excited about it.
Have you reached out to the police?
Yep. I don't... I see you got a badge on. It's great.
He's a good guy to know.
Uh-oh.
Didn't Brandon talk to you?
No, he's talking with Deputy Chief Mazza.
Okay.
We forwarded them the information and the application for the Class G special use permit, and they're in the process of filling out and getting back. So we're aware.
Dan?
Is it just liquors or food too?
Yep, we're going to do what we call a burger bar. So we have mobile flat tops that will come and just do burgers right on the patio there too.
I just want to make sure, did I watch the... Is this the same group as Where the Hell is Maple Park t-shirts?
Yeah, I didn't wear that one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's us.
Looks like a cool concept. As the mayor would say, I would encourage you to kick the tires here.
Okay, well, it's always... We always appreciate hearing that, so.
Okay, look forward to seeing you apply for the...
So who wants a business card?
You can leave them on the end there and they can grab them.
We're not doing a pop-up tonight, are you?
In your defense, there are a lot of us.
Yeah. It's okay.
And they're not all here.
Thank you.
What time will the burgers be done tonight?
Give it to the guy with the badge. He'd probably...
Yeah.
MetroNet is here tonight, so they might want to lead the matter from the public rather than wait until the end of the project status.
Okay, guys, yeah, well, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, another matter from the public. There are representatives here from MetroNet. As you know, on Monday, we had a follow-up meeting from our prior meeting where we were talking about getting things back on track from some complaints that we have received from residents. We also received numerous complaints last week that we asked to address with them, and so as a result of that meeting, they have already completed the restoration items that were requested last week, as well as sent a representative to the meeting here tonight to show their commitment to doing a better job with those restorations in the future, as well as leaving sites where ongoing installation is occurring free from tools, to not leave equipment out there unless it's some sort of, you know, very extraordinary circumstance that requires that to be done, because we know that leaving that type of equipment in a residential neighborhood can be an attractive nuisance to children in the neighborhood, and we don't want anybody to get hurt. As well, we talked about some safety issues where there was a covering on an exposed hole, but we needed to do a better job of marking that to make sure that people knew to stay out of the perimeter of that hole. So with that, I would invite Dan Cachado, who is from the Legal Affairs Department of MetroNet, to just say a few words.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, we did address the... I spoke to you, sir, and we followed up immediately. I showed photographs. We restored everything that you had mentioned in the photographs that you had sent us. You know, from time to... We're about, we're over 50% built here, you know, and there's times where, you know, I mean, there are times we will make mistakes, and when we get called, we will deal with them immediately, and that's what we did with these folks. We met with them. Ray is here, who's our, you know, construction, you know, manager, and, you know, if we hear of a problem, we will deal with it, and that's the most important thing. And, you know, by October, we're done building, you know, so all the mess will be done, and you'll have a very fiber-rich community, and we'll go from there. Any questions at all? Yes, sir.
My concern, thank you for handling that stuff, and my concern is not the fact that you won't take care of it, it's that we don't have things that have to be taken care of.
Right.
So, you know, I know that kind of out of the gate, you guys were fantastic. We had, you know, a couple complaints here and there, but, you know, stuff happens, but it spiked. I mean, we had some serious, serious issues, and so, again, my concern isn't the fact that you eventually clean those things up.
We absolutely want to be proactive, and we addressed it at the meeting, and at the meeting was everybody, including the individual supervisor for this area, who I made sure, you know, that he, you know, he called me, as a matter of fact, right before this meeting, and said, "Everything's done." But you're right, you know, it's a lot better to be proactive on stuff and not have a problem later, you know? And we saw things. There was a little hole here, well, kid could trip in that and, you know, hurt himself, you know, things like that. If there... I mean, obviously, there's, you know, you've got to be, use some kind of common sense too, and you're in somebody's yard. You know, we try to do, we do the letters and the, you know, the little flags and everything else, but, you know, there's... You've got to be, you use common sense, and if you see something that doesn't look right, make sure it's fixed, and we addressed all those things. So, yeah, you're right, we don't want to just fix things, we want to have them fixed ahead of time.
You're also going to have 14 people that'll be micromanaging you from now on.
That's okay. That's one of my jobs.
Dan?
Yes, sir.
I came home from... So today's my day off. I was out doing some errands and whatnot, and I came back from lunch and some meetings. I saw the Metro trucks, the MetroNet trucks parked on my cul-de-sac, and I was like, this is not going to be a good rest of my evening. Everything was torn up. There were like three-foot holes everywhere, there was... It was a mess. And I remember thinking to myself, oh, I've got a city council meeting tonight, I cannot wait to talk about this. Made some phone calls, finished cleaning up the house. Two hours later, went outside, it was like nothing had ever happened. That is not the experience that I have heard is all my neighbors have had, but I was... My bar was very, very low, and I was impressed that everything was returned to its state of where it was before. I knocked on all of my neighbors' doors and said, "Hey, can you put your cable on real quick and tell me what's on Channel 2?" Nobody's cable was cut, and I would say I was pleasantly surprised. I wish I didn't walk into that experience automatically expecting the worst, and it's unfortunate that that's where I'm at. I wonder how many consumers were affected by the mistakes that have happened over the last several months. I wish you guys good luck. I want there to be competition in the market, and I've heard nothing but wonderful things from the people that have the service. It's unfortunate that I had that as my go-to reaction, say, "Oh, shoot, you guys are in my neighborhood." I feel bad that that's how it is, but I was pleasantly surprised by the way it was...
I'm glad of that. It is a messy business. I mean, you're built, you know, you're going through, you're doing, you know, it's a tough business to build it, but once it's done and everything gets settled and any complaints get fixed, and proactively we watch out for things, then you have a fiber-rich community, and it makes even the, you know, even if they don't take MetroNet and they stay with Comcast or whatever, it makes everybody better, you know? It's better to have, you know, you know, competition in your marketplace where... And so, yeah, but I'm glad you had a good experience. Yes, sir.
So we welcomed MetroNet into our community. The lady who came and represented you did a very fine job representing you, and so what's gone on is not what we were expecting, but things happen. And now you speaking, saying, you know, you'll be proactive, and that's all well and good, and I understand, you mean it, but you need to translate that to your... Get that to your field personnel and ensure us that the gentleman who's your supervisor for this area is in this area all the time. So he goes around and not just waits for something to develop, but sees it and addresses it before anyone else sees it, and he's proactively telling the workers that if you're... As your workers, your employees or subcontractors, you need to take this seriously, you need to be safe, because it all takes is a split second for someone to fall into a hole, and then there's liability for everyone.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, and this gentleman was there last night, his boss is sitting right back there, and you're absolutely right, and we, you know, and that's how you solve problems, in that you find them before they develop.
Right, so, thank you.
Okay. Elliot?
Yes, I mean, first off, I do appreciate you contacting me yesterday, immediately after the meeting with staff, and I do appreciate, you know, you coming in tonight to speak with us. Similarly, I do hope that this does not require a third contact, if you will, because obviously the timeline right now for me is beyond off-putting, you know, the history being what it was, you know, to then have to come back and identify these as ongoing problems, the photos that I sent over, you know, where we were seeing exposed cable left behind, equipment left on the private property side, not even on the easement or the street, let alone in the neighborhood, tools and holes left open and exposed, you know, as you just mentioned. Kids go through these neighborhoods, you know, this is just not acceptable. So I absolutely concur that the time to be proactive was probably already in the past, so it's very unfortunate that we are where we are, but I truly hope that this is not something we see anymore of, and I hope you pass that on to your crews.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, anybody else?
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, next up would be our wastewater treatment plant, monthly construction update. Sorry, Scott.
Unless you want to give the... No? No?
Good evening.
Hi, Jerry.
Hello. Hey, can you hear me?
Hello.
Yep, speaking into the microphone, okay.
Microphone on, it's okay.
All right, so, update for the month of May for the wastewater treatment plant. We're at substantial completion, so a little bit of good news for the group. We have reached the point where the contractor has claimed that everything is ready for the city for beneficial use. We have gone around and inspected it with all the various departments of the city, created our punch lists and given them a certificate of substantial completion. They have had an ongoing punch list for a while, and that list is dwindling. All equipment is operating, city staff is operating it, so they are hands-on now, starting to own the equipment, figure things out. The SCADA integration work is still ongoing a little bit. There is some, there are some things that they're still being worked on in terms of what the screens look like, the units of different variables that are shown on the screen, just minor things, though, that the operators are coming up with as they're working with the equipment and becoming more familiar with what they want to see, and they've been trained on everything. Like I said, the only last little bits on the SCADA screens they'll be brought up to speed with, and then will be done. So that's where we're at in the last month. As far as project photos, these are the centrifuges in the main building up north. They're operating, they're working well. This is the north facade, fence is gone, restoration is starting to grow. We don't have flags in there yet, but we're going to get them soon. At the digester operations building, we don't have, you know, toolboxes or trucks parked in front of the buildings anymore. The city is operating all pumps and boilers in the building, and I picture the boiler room there, operating as it should. Digestors are warm and operating and happy. The construction progress, you haven't seen this pay request quite yet, but you will fairly soon, with a request in concurrence with substantial completion, they're allowed to request a release of half of the retainage or 5% of the construction value of the contract, so that will be coming within the next pay request. I am thinking it's going to be about two weeks before they're completely done with this punch list as an optimistic view. We will see how long it takes, but the punch list is getting worked on pretty diligently out there in the field by the contractor and his subs. No change to change orders yet. The contractor has requested that we process a pre-final change order for four items that are hanging out there, that have been hanging out there for a long time, because he doesn't know yet when we will meet to discuss the final change order. So there are four items that we all agree on, there are 10 items that we have not yet come to an agreement on, and there are two items that he is waiting for numbers on still. So those four items will probably come in front of you, and it's, I think it's $10,000, just items that have been approved for a very long time.
How much was that, Jerry?
I believe it's $10,000.
The outstanding that haven't been determined?
Haven't been determined. So the numbers, some of them are there, some of them are not, so I don't want to put a number out there yet for that. As far as schedule, I know that they achieved substantial completion, the date for that was actually the 21st. We've released the 5% retention or allowed him to apply for payment for that 5%. I'm throwing June 28th out there, like I said, at the earliest, as an optimistic viewpoint of when we'll reach final completion. So those numbers, taking into account for the contractual liquidated damages of $768,000, our release of retention of 5% of the project of $26 million is a little bit more than twice that value, we will add, sorry, four times that value. We'll have plenty to cover liquidated damages with the 5% retention that we have for negotiations So I'm sure there are questions out there.
Comments or questions from anyone? Well, I have some questions.
Okay.
Liquidated damages.
Yes.
So, to be clear, the city wants to be made whole on any outstanding costs we had to incur due to liquidated damages, correct?
Yes.
And anything above and beyond that, it doesn't matter to me, it'll be up to the rest of the council, just to make clear that we're going to be whole. I think I've said that in the past. With the liquidate, with the cost of liquidated damages, we have retention, and you're going to drop the retention down to 5%, but that retention isn't held by Williams Brothers. That retention is divided between whatever the contract amounts were for 30-odd subs.
Correct.
And so if it's a plumber who's done all their work and had no contribution whatsoever for liquidated damages, and his contract was $2 million, so his 10% is $200,000, he needs to be paid his $200,000, and Williams Brothers cannot hold that money and say, "Well, we have liquidated damages." We'll have a flurry of waivers, of lien waivers on us, so how do we handle that?
I have not seen any liens yet, but I understand your concern. The last thing we want is to bring this into the legal front, but when it comes to what the general contractor does with his subcontractors and their agreements, if he's paying them out and representing that he's holding it, or if he's paying it out of his own pocket and adding the retention to his own, because he's done that with some of his subs already, some of the items like concrete materials and things like that where he had to pay upfront in full.
Right.
Some of the items, I believe asphalt pavement was another one, was paid in full. Those types of contracts, we allowed to pass through, we allow Williams Brothers to bear the retention, but as far as directing what the contractor does with the retention and how he distributes any liquidated damages that may be enforced is out of our hands.
Perhaps, but I just want to make sure we don't have any exposure to that, to City Batavia. What he has, he holds the contracts.
Yes.
Right.
But I just want to make sure we don't have any exposure with liens. And that doesn't keep any subcontractor, if he's holding any retention of theirs, and I approve, I think it should go to 5%, but that he's holding any retention of theirs to cover his liquidated damages, they have every right to lien the City of Batavia. So I just, just so we're clear that, you know, we're covering our exposure with that.
We are contractually covered, we're covering our exposure continuously on our end from Trotter and Associates and HDR's perspective, since we were six months from the original contractual substantial completion a year ago. So we've been actively pursuing it, we're conscious of it, we've had discussions with the general about it in regular presentations and construction meetings, notifying them on a regular basis, listen, the project says months behind, we're working towards a common goal here, but that's still there. It's still presented to them on a weekly basis.
So, again, I'll just repeat one last time, though, I don't, I want to make sure the city is whole, and I'm not looking to penalize Williams Brothers, I think I did a very good job, albeit late, but I don't have any interest in penalizing them. I just want to make sure we're whole, there was an injury that was, that occurred, I want to make sure all that, the workers comp, everything like that is the City of Batavia is protected, and after that, I don't need to be, you know, penalize them, it doesn't make sense to me, okay?
I understand.
Anybody else have anything? Gary?
If there's no more questions, I just wanted to acknowledge Jerry and Trotter and Associates for these monthly updates. Really, at this point, they're finalizing a couple of change runners, and then we're going to go into negotiations related to liquidated damages. That's not something Jerry's going to come and put up on the screen for monthly updates. It's really kind of the last monthly update, as far as progress goes.
We're going to miss you, Jerry.
Trotter and Associates will be back again when the project is completed, and we'll have a tour down there, but I just wanted to say thank you to these really excellent monthly updates.
Yes.
As far as month to month goes, this will be the last one.
All right, thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Jerry.
Jerry, I'm going to second that. I mean, I thought you guys did an excellent job in controlling, like we've said in the past, the change orders. I mean, it's less than, I believe, 1%.
Yeah.
I mean, that is, that's outstanding work on your part for planning and the design work, so, you know, thank you to you and to Scott and to your team.
Oh, conveyor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Your presentations are lovely. I've just enjoyed them.
Oh, thank you. A lot of effort goes into these, so I appreciate that. A lot of love. That, too.
Thank you. Now I see that we did have a presentation spot for Lodi Tap House. We'll move right past that to number eight, which is Ordinance 1945 authorizing execution of a jurisdictional boundary line agreement with the village of Sugar Grove. Mr. Callahan?
This is our ongoing attempt to take over Sugar Grove, I mean...
My evil plan is working. That's excellent.
Geneva first.
We're only going to... Well, we want a train station, so, you know, we've got to work on that, too, so...
One way or the other, we get one.
That's right. So this actually is an outcropping of our initial discussions with North Aurora, believe it or not. We have not finalized things with North Aurora because as we were getting to make progress, they decided to take a little bit of a left turn and go back to the Aurora agreement and try and deal with things with Aurora, because I think they're considered more of a threat to them than we are, because their agreement, I believe, is expiring in November of this year, so we still have time left on our agreement with North Aurora. So I think we have some things in principle. The idea behind these agreements was to make all the lines match, and so this line is very similar to some of the things that are being discussed with North Aurora. Each of them can operate independently, and that was kind of also the goal of it, too, is that to make sure that, you know, we weren't crossing lines and making sure that we weren't doing anything that was, you know, going to be conflicting with the other agreements. So essentially, what we're doing here is extending and renewing the boundary line with Sugar Grove. Terms of the agreement are not substantially different than what we have right now. The main difference is where the line is. It's actually kind of a one-sided agreement, I'll say, because it just benefits Batavia, because the line right now, if you follow the cursor, follows the Long Run Creek here, I'm sorry, the Lake Run Creek, north through the Forest Preserve, then it kind of makes a jog up in here and then cuts across up to Main Street, and then it goes up to Kestling Road further up. So what this does actually is, you know, I think during our discussions, we decided that, you know, it didn't really make a lot of sense to go north of Main Street, because we don't anticipate Sugar Grove is going to be going north of Main Street between them and their discussions with Elburn, so this seemed to make, Main Street seemed to be a logical termination point in the north. So essentially, what it does is, right now, it gives us all of this additional territory here. A lot of it's Forest Preserve, and I would anticipate more of it may end up being Forest Preserve at some point in the future, but it does push our line basically west to Bliss Road, so that would give us territory in there. So as part of our negotiation with North Aurora, the areas around Seavee and south would go to North Aurora if both communities agree to that, but short of that, we've now acquired additional territory in this area, in Oak Pier, that would be on our side of the boundary line instead of Sugar Grove. So we think it's a fair agreement, makes sense, it's not anything substantively different than what we have now, other than just where the line is. We think it's a fair line, and we recommend approval of it.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Alan? Does that line up with our school district, park district, library? Are they markedly different?
It's a little bit different, because the lines actually kind of fall through the Forest Preserve right now, in the school and library district, so it's...
But it would encompass all of those, so we wouldn't have any of our other districts outside of our boundary line?
Correct, we would not be giving away any Batavia Library School Park, yeah.
Because I think, in some respects, I think that's important to think about those other districts. I mean, you know, I grew up in Geneva Township, Geneva Park District, Batavia School District, so, you know, that tests to present a few problems, but I am glad that the rest of the districts are within the boundary line.
We'll have some discussions when we get to the North Aurora green, because I think that's different a little bit, but this one, we actually pick up, if we annexed out further west, we'd pick up a little bit of the Kalin School District as part of that and Town and Country Library.
So Scott, you know, Alan makes a good point, and so when you guys, you know, go into your negotiations, do you bring that up?
We talk about those things, yeah. Yeah, those are things that are talked about.
Because that's a very important point to make. I mean, things get kind of convoluted after a while, you don't know who's paying what tax.
Right, right. And it also makes it very hard on families, too, if you decide that, hey, I'd like my kids to go to the quarry, but then you have to pay an out-of-town fee to the park district because your house happens to be the one that's in another township, you know, or another park district.
Right, right.
Dan?
And there's nothing stopping these districts from negotiating with each other if they wanted to move their lines, if they wanted to, to make it more congruent with where Batavians are going to be, or...
With the exception of the library district, which I'm not sure would be shifting the lines, yeah, certainly, certainly the different, you know, districts can negotiate a different line, and, you know, like I said, most of this area is Forest Preserve now, so, I mean, so, I mean, it's tax exempt. It doesn't really benefit or not benefit them. It's kind of neutral, so...
Yeah, but how many donut holes are out that way?
Scott knows.
None so far.
Those are coffee cakes.
Yeah, that's fine.
I recommend Ordinance 19-45 authorizing the execution of a jurisdictional boundary line agreement with the village of Sugar Grove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This would need to be on the regular agenda. The, we'll have this on the city council meeting for the public hearing, which is required as part of a boundary agreement. So that'll be on the regular agenda, plus the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Resolution 19-067 authorizing execution of the contract with Performance Construction and Engineering LLC for the Area 3 Stormwater Sewer Separation Phase 2 in the amount not to exceed $1,990,753.80. I'll just turn this one over to Gary.
Four separate items presented in Andrea's memo, and I'll try and put them in the best chronological order. When the city elected to go forward with the sewer separation project back in 2016, in combination with the Ward 1 project, the city voted to issue general obligation bonds to help fund those projects. It was known at that time that the value of the bonds wasn't sufficient to cover both projects. So we basically applied for low-interest loans for the sewer separation, knowing that if we didn't get the low-interest loans, we would end up basically using money or stopping the Ward 1 project and using the money, because council had felt that the sewer separation was the, was the top priority. Luckily, we have gotten low-interest loans. The next year, we'll be applying for more, and I'll talk about that in a second. But this basically enables us to use low-interest loan funding for the sewer separation and use the GO bond funding for Ward 1, thus accomplishing both projects. So the low-interest loan process, you have already, as a council, already approved the middle of the loan application through an ordinance. You've already approved the loan value through a previous ordinance. And we're now just to the point where we're executing the low-interest loan documents. And I'll get into that as we, as we get into this contract. As Alderman Wolf just said, we have had a bid opening, and the lowest contractor for construction is Performance Construction Engineering in the amount of $1,990,000 roughly. Performance is the company that's currently working in Ward 1, which is, first of all, they're doing a good job. We've been having good luck with them. I think their interactions with the, with the residents in area, in that area have been positive. Their interactions with our RE in the field have been positive. And their plan, since they were first apparent no bidder, which is now several weeks ago, their plan has been to finish in Ward 1 and then basically roll their crews right into the sewer separation, which works best from a community standpoint. So we, we are benefiting from, from that aspect. What's not covered in her memo, but we, what we've talked about extensively internally is the fact that we're now mid-June. This project will not get started until probably mid-July, and it's very likely that the sewer separation project will not be 100% complete when we start to get winter weather again in September, like we do in Chicago now. So we do have, and we'll be working on plans in order to reach milestones, so that if winter weather hits early, we can wrap things up for those residents out there and then come back in 2020 if we have to. So that's, we're not, we're not ignoring that contingency. That, that's kind of in our plans to be able to handle it if we, if we need to. So on the engineering side of all this, back in 2016, we had RMP Sharp do the Phase 1 study. Then we elected to utilize WBK engineers to do the Phase 2 design. And earlier this year, we went through the RFQ process, and we have selected V3 to do the Phase 3 construction or RE work. V3 did Houston Street for us. V3 is currently doing Deer Path and Main Street for us. We've had good luck with V3. So part of the resolutions before you tonight are to, one, award the construction contract to Performance, to execute the master services agreement with V3. And what that is, is with all of our professional consultants, we have a master services agreement that outlines terms and conditions. And those terms and conditions run with really all projects. And then under that master services agreement, we approve task orders. So one resolution would be to approve the MSA, another resolution to actually approve a task order for construction engineering. And then finally, the Resolution 1907, 1970, is to approve execution of the low-interest loan documents, which technically we've already done with the previous one. But both Peggy and Kevin and internally, we just thought we wanted to codify it through this one last resolution. The mayor technically already has authority to sign the documents, but again, we wanted to bring it all to you tonight. It's a big package. So those are the four resolutions before you.
Okay. Any questions? Start to go through these.
So Gary, I have a couple of questions, I think. Only two firms replied to the RFQ from the six who are on the list.
Yes.
Any reason why?
You know, we have, and we've struggled with this with the resurfacing project, and we, we, these two firms told us back then that we should have been out for this like a year ago. The engineering business right now has gotten very busy. So that's really the fundamental reason why, is because these firms are all extremely busy. I will speak to the design firm who did the design work right now, WBK. They're struggling to find people, because they just cannot find enough engineers right now.
So and, so I don't know, maybe we might talk about opening that up a little bit. You know how my feelings are on that. So, because I, again, the two firms that were there was V3 and Trotter. Now Trotter has just performed exceptionally well for us.
Excellent.
And Trotter came in 2-2-2 across the board. And, and I thought, I mean, they're not qualified to do this work. V3 is more qualified to do this work over Trotter. How do you, how do you arrive at that?
Well, again, Trotter's...
And Ben, just let me, let me just say this. I'm working with V3. They're a very qualified outfit. I have no issues against them whatsoever. But I just, how do you come to that?
Trotter actually did one of the previous phases for us on one of these projects. So again, the same, kind of the same story. We also believe that Trotter is very qualified. Sometimes it comes down to availability of personnel and what personnel are actually available to work on a given project, and the background of that person, those personnel. And in combination with qualification side, there's, there's also the cost side.
Right.
And basically, both of those get put together. I don't think we've really been terribly unhappy with any of the REs that we've worked with on all the projects.
Right.
I will say this, that sometimes they put together a team that's stronger than another team.
And so we ask them for the team personnel.
We ask them for the team personnel. And it's not a knock against the, it's not a knock against the firm. It's perhaps that maybe that firm has got another big project going, and they have the team that we work with in the past that we liked, happens to be working on another project. It's, it's, it's not a bad thing. I mean, they have to do their business decisions, too. So...
Right. So moving along, with, with the, the schedule, we, do we not have work in 2020 also for, for separating it? So the work that we don't get this year, we're pushing it to 2020. Will we be pushing too much onto 2020?
Our fingers are crossed that we'll get everything done this year, but, but, but I've made it clear internally that we need to plan for the contingency of not getting everything done this year.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we, historically in my career, I used to pave on the day after Thanksgiving almost every year. It was probably one of the best days to pave. In the last couple of years, the day after Thanksgiving, it's been snowing. So I mean, we, we've just been, our weather windows have gotten a little crazy in Chicagoland over the last couple of years. So next year, what we would be doing is, if this contract carries over, this contract will simply carry over. We'll be going out for bid. We'll be getting a contractor lined up. And if it's the same contractor, that's great. But if it's a different contractor, this guy will be winding down, and this guy will be starting up, as if this other guy's not working over here. You know, so they're, they'll, we'll coordinate so that they, we can just keep going from one project into the next.
So, and I guess I would just say then, for public consumption, is that, you know, separating the sewers is a good thing. We've had a lot of people come before us in the past few years, when, when we had, you know, large amounts of rain, you know, incredible rain events, we've been, you know, having, experiencing that their, their sewers have been backing up in their home because of the combination with the I and I inside the pipe. And so this here is, we're relieving a lot of that pressure on these homes and these people, these residents.
Knocking on wood, I believe we're already starting to see the benefits in this area.
You just kind of said that in your memo, too, I believe. And so how much further do we have to go with the separation?
Andrea did a better job of describing it in here, the actual limits of the roadways. Last year's project really got us into the neighborhood, that first block into the neighborhood.
Right.
This year's project branches off three different directions, each going a block. And I believe the following year, we continue off, and again, directions following a block. So we are maybe a third of the way into the actual neighborhood, because the work we've done thus far is all that connection from the neighborhood over to the river.
Right.
The outfall, and then all through the cemetery, and underneath Route 25, Fabian.
So, well, I think it's important that we do this and continue to do this and fund it as best we can. So thank you for that.
Anybody else? Elliot?
Just to call it out again, because I think it's worth calling out, and, and I realize your memo was speaking to this, but pleased to see that the engineer's estimates, you know, that which we planned for, that the total contract came in a little over 62 grand below that. So, good to see.
That's a good, thank you for reminding me, because I wanted to touch on another point tonight, not only in these memos, but as we go into other projects tonight. There are times when we will recommend a ward of a contract that's actually over, like what that line item is in the budget. And in the budget, we run by funds. So we do fund accounting, and that fund might have 10 different activity items in it. And we might be over by X dollars on this activity item, but we basically will look at the entire fund as a whole near the end of the year and say, well, it's clear we're going to be over on that fund. Therefore, we have to come to city council to do a budget amendment. But at this stage, and really relatively early in the construction season, we may be over, but we may also know that one of these other line items isn't going to happen this year, or we'll wait and see if that other line item comes in lower, so that the total fund, as long as the total fund comes in below budget, then a budget amendment is not needed. So...
Good point. Thank you.
Dan?
Just to piggyback on Mike's question, it's been a while since I thought about this. It, it wouldn't hurt to revisit that, what, 2017 memo regarding, you know, the different people that we work with. I'm not, I'm not saying I don't want to open a can of worms here, but it would not hurt to dust that memo off and...
No, I don't think, I don't think it was staff's intention for that memo to be forever in memoriam.
For sure. But maybe now's time to take it?
Yep. And I, and we kind of have that in our cycle every few years to be looking at it. So I, I, I hear their feedback, and, I mean, it was always kind of our plan to recycle through them.
Well, it's been two years, and I thought we discussed a three-year review.
Yeah. We're there.
Right.
We're basically starting up. And again, we got to kind of balance these big projects. And that's our, like, wintertime project where our things...
For sure. I'm just glad you brought it, I'm just glad you brought it up.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. May I get a motion then for Resolution 1967-R, execution of contract with Performance Construction Engineering LLC for the Area 3 Stormwater Separation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for passage, recommend city council Resolution 19-068-R authorizing execution of a master service agreement with V3 Companies Limited.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That what we can put on consent agenda?
Yes. I'll make a motion. We recommend city council for passage Resolution 19-069-R authorizing execution of task code number one for construction engineering with V3 Companies, V3 Companies, excuse me, in the amount not to exceed $163,468.97.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Knopf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We want to put that on consent, and then we'll just talk about the rest of it at the big one.
Yeah, that would be great.
If that's fine.
And I'll make a motion. We recommend city council for passage Resolution 19-070-R authorizing execution of low-interest loan with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in the amount not to exceed $800,000.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Knopf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. And I can go on consent, too.
We'll just talk about the first motion, just...
Right, the first one, and that, what we're doing out there, I think, is the big thing, that people know that that's coming. That affects their streets in front of their house. Next up would be Resolution 1971-R, execution of contract for the 2019 street resurfacing and patch program with Geneva Construction in the amount not to exceed $561,329, which includes the bid price plus 3% contingency amount. This would be one of those items that's over budget for...
Yes.
...a year. So you're going to make this money up somewhere else?
Yeah, and in fact, I brought the, the list of where this, you know, where this fund comes out. And I just, for example, in the 6471 subaccount, we have sidewalk and curb replacement. We have the new sidewalk program. That hasn't even been bid yet. Parking lot maintenance, that hasn't even been bid yet. Replace sidewalk for Wilson to First Street after the sewer separation. That one may not even go this year. So there are things within that fund that we know may not even happen this year, based on timing. So...
I think in, in a case like this, this might be a good point to think about for some of the memos that we get, that if you were to give us the budget number, okay, whatever the budget is, and here's where the fund is at, we spent 60% of that fund already, we anticipate 10% not getting spent, that's where we'll get the money for...
Yep.
...the, this overage in this one item. I think that would make me feel better, and I think that would inform more of us.
Yeah, I think that came out of...
Just what you think is going to happen with it.
That came out of last week's committee of the hall. And I was speaking to Alderman O'Brien before the meeting tonight. Rahat had, Rahat, I was going on vacation last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Rahat was putting together these memos on Thursday and then got called away for a family emergency. So these memos got put together, and then normally, our internal review process just didn't happen last week because of the circumstances. So there's another mistake on this memo in that the engineer's estimate is actually listed twice on here, as opposed to the other contractors. So little things like that normally would get caught in our, in our internal review process. That just didn't happen because of the circumstances. But out of last week's cowl, the discussion and listing account numbers or values of budgets, that, that will incorporate in our, our memo.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Everybody read the list. Anybody want to trade streets, or...
I have a question.
Anything?
One of the streets listed is North River Street, south of Fabian, where the Fabian Bridge is being torn up. I've had citizens contact me already in the last week about people using the Highlands as a cut-through.
Yeah.
One of the escape routes from the Fabian Bridge is cutting down 25. And now that's going to be going through repavement. So the escape route logically would be cut through the Highlands.
So Route 25 is not going to, this one will not resurface Route 25.
No.
This is going to resurface a little area of...
I'm off a street. River. You're thinking of Wash West.
Rest of, rest of Route 25, yeah.
Looked at the map, Ron. Thank you.
No, yeah, and we, we, we have talked several times, Chief Ull already left, about the Highlands and the reality of traffic trying to escape south through the Highlands. I will say this, that Scott Haynes emailed me tonight. It took him just as long to go from Public Works to where Scott Haynes lives on the north side of town, as it takes me to go from Public Works to Oswego tonight. He literally sat in that much traffic due to people trying to escape Fabian.
Yeah.
I will say that probably people aren't going to come and sit in Wilson Street for half an hour every night. They're going to try and find alternate routes. And that's, so we're going to have to be on top of that. And it'll take a little while for the traffic to settle, and people decide on what route they want to, want to go. But yes. So we're, we're kind of on top of that as best we can in monitoring at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to make mention of the fact that Scott Buning actually had kind of headed up once again this year, the CDBG process, and we got $75,000 through the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is a program that gives us money for certain economically qualifying neighborhoods. So free, basically free money from, for the feds.
We're all about getting that anytime we can. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have much area in town that qualifies, but the area that we have, we've tried to maximize.
Okay. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Malley.
Second.
Second by Callahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll put that on regular agenda, so we can talk about streets being redone.
May I make a comment?
And the grant.
I just wanted to recognize Gary for his participation, and it's, it's the logo on his shirt. It's IPW Man, and that's the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network. And if I could put you on the spot, Gary, can you tell us a little bit more about what that agency does and the types of emergencies that they have responded to in the last couple of years?
Sure. Well, I'm only wearing this today, because we actually had a wrap-up to an exercise that we had done a couple of weeks ago. The city joined Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network. When I first came here back in 2008, we were like the 30th community... We were like the thirtieth community to join back then, and now there's over three hundred communities in the state of Illinois. It's a statewide network of public works agencies. I serve as a regional board member, I also serve as a, as a duty officer for the agency. And basically, in my time, I have coordinated the response to the Ottawa Napal tornado, I coordinated several flood, flooding events in Algonquin and northern suburbs, I worked on the tornado out in Rochelle, and I was the Rochelle, I can't remember the other one, Fairmount, for, for, whatever that F community was out there. So basically, we respond to straight-line wind events, and tornado events, and flooding events, anything where other communities need public works resources, we, we work together as members and respond to those communities, so. We have sent crews, we send crews down to Coal City, we send crews to a couple of other of these events, when we can, you know, spare the crews to send, so.
It's, it's a, it's a great organization.
It really is.
Banding together.
Yeah.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the next one up will be Resolution nineteen dash sixty-five R, waive bidding on network storage systems. Howard's here.
Good evening. I am going to talk about both nineteen sixty-five and nineteen sixty-six at the same time, if that's okay. They both relate. We're asking to waive bidding, to go ahead and purchase two devices that make up our storage area network. They are from HP Enterprise, HPE, they are Nimble HF forty storage area networks. What they do is they are the two main stor, or what we're replacing are the two main storage nodes for our network, so all the servers, data, well, I can't say email anymore, now that's out in the cloud, but hopefully, there's some people happy about that, I, I know we are. But it's, it really is our main storage place for all the data that we use, and we have them, we have one in one location, one in another, and what they do is they replicate data back and forth multiple times a day, so it provides us some redundancy for emergency services, allows us to create multiple virtual servers, so we have roughly between fifty or fifty-five virtual servers between these two items, or between these two devices. The devices that we have now are from Dell, they're Equal Logic model, model, I believe, sixty-one hundred. They are being phased out by Dell, so we could not purchase them, we've been happy with them, next month, they'll be six years old, so we're looking to replace those. We are looking to replace those with some bigger, faster units, something that will last longer than, let's say, the five-year timeframe that most people use to replace IT-related items. The, the price that we had, and, and the reason we're asking to waive bidding, the, the discount rate ended up being better than the state contract, better than GSA, so we've beaten both of those. We've also gone out, and of course, I try and research, you know, can we, can we get a better price? And I ended up speaking to a couple of gentlemen in Gurnee, Illinois, and they work for the, for the village of, I don't know if it's a village or city of Gurnee, but they purchased a similar device, and it's a similar device as to what we, we priced a couple of different devices, they bid, went out to bid on one of them, and essentially was the same rate that we got as far as the discount, so we're really happy with the price that we got from Insight, and we're hoping these are going to last longer than the five years, we're hoping we're going to go, in the memo, I was a bit conservative, I said six to seven years, I'm really hoping we're going to get eight years, and, so that's what we're looking to do, we're looking to waive the bidding and make the purchase through Insight for the two devices.
Elliot?
Yeah, no, I just...
I'm sorry, some of you look a little glazed over, I hope I'm not boring you guys.
No, I, I think it's, I think it's great that you may able to make this, the existing storage system last as long, certainly when, when the provider is at the point of discontinuing, that's usually a fair sign that you've made it last its full life, so that's great to see, and, and I, I hope you didn't just jinx it by saying you hope this lasts eight years.
It was funny, we just replaced the controller in it earlier this week, so I think that jinx has already happened.
No, but that's great, and I'm very happy to see the price, too, so, yeah.
That was going to be one of my questions, was, is what was the price, do you remember what we paid for the last set of these we did?
Um, we paid somewhere around, I want to say, I want to say around forty thousand, but that didn't include maintenance. Maintenance on top of that is about seven thousand per year, so another thirty-five thousand. Now, these are faster, they're much larger in capacity, and it includes a five-year maintenance. What we've learned in, in dealing with some of these companies is that if you don't get the maintenance up front, you're kind of at their will with what they want to charge you for maintenance in the future, so we think it's better just to get the maintenance up front, and know what we're going to pay moving forward. Now, after the fifth year, well, yes, then, we're going to be somewhat at their will to see what we can do for, for the last couple of years of maintenance, but hopefully, that will work out.
So how would, you know, technology is like, seems to be advancing exponentially, and I was like, crazy. So what is the expected life on any of the stuff that we buy? I mean, you say six to seven years, but...
Well, you know...
Is it, is it that it just fails, that it's the end of life, or is it just, now it's kind of way behind the times?
Well, sometimes, let's say with your home computer, you might buy a computer, might, might have bought a computer about five years ago with Windows Seven, and now Windows Ten comes out, you upgrade to Windows Ten, now the software is requesting more resources from the computer, your computer hence runs a little bit slower, so now you want to upgrade the hardware. Well, the same thing happens on these backend devices, and in addition to that, we're about ninety-plus percent full on our current storage area networks, and, and sometimes these devices may actually run well. I mean, our devices right now are running, you know, nobody's complained about them yet, but, you know, with the maintenance going out, and, and the product being discontinued, it's going to be hard to, to continue to maintain them. These new units have faster everything, and they have, we're trying to increase some of the speed on the network, we have had some issues with GIS and with AutoCAD files taking a little bit of extra time to load, so these are going to increase not just the bandwidth that data travels, but also the speed of the drives and, and everything else that's involved with it.
Well, I've always felt that you and Todd do an excellent job.
Thank you.
That you bring us up to date, and you, you, you watch the dollars, which is very important in municipal work, so I, I always appreciate your efforts, thank you.
And one other thing I wanted to address, yes, this is a little bit more than our, what we budgeted, but we think that for, for a couple of things that, that haven't happened or are going, going to happen later, we don't think that this extra funding will push the entire IS budget over, over our, our total, so I, I don't, that's why I'm not asking for a budget.
We might need a budget amendment at the end of the year, you said.
Oh, I don't know, let's hope not.
Let's hope not.
We try hard not to ask for that.
Quick, just a quick question, what happens with the Dell equipment, then? Does that have any value anymore, anywhere, or is it recycled?
You know, that's a good question. If people are still running them or trying to run them, I've had people, colleagues, send out lists of items, asking for controllers, we can, we can look and see if there's any value, you know, I don't think anybody's going to buy it except for the used parts, or, you know, for scrap, but the fact that you're not going to be able to get parts for them anymore...
Yeah, that could...
You're not going to be able to get much for it, but...
Okay. Anything else? No other questions for a motion?
I'll make the motion, that we approve Resolution nineteen sixty-five R to waive bidding on HPE Nimble Storage Area Network System.
Second.
Motion by Meister, second by Malley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and we'll have to go on regular agenda.
Alan?
Okay.
Alan?
There's not a big deal, but paragraph four, the recitals, the verb is wrong, it's exists,
not exits, that's all.
And I'll...
I'll be editor, sorry.
I'll make the motion, as well, the approval of Resolution nineteen sixty-six R, authorizing the purchase of an HPE Nimble Storage System from Insight for an amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand twenty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion by Meister, second by Janzit, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, again, regular agenda.
No, we have to.
It has to. Yep. Okay. Find the right one here. Next up is Resolution nineteen dash seventy-two dash R, authorizing Myers Controlled Power LLC to furnish thirty-eight KV and fifteen KV metal bed switchgear for the Paramount Substation upgrade for an amount not to exceed one million one hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Mike?
So, about three weeks ago, we passed an ordinance for the Paramount switchgear that we were going to, you know, build a new one, what we passed the ordinance for was for the material to build a new one at the Paramount switchgear. That was for the, I take that back, that was for the Northeast Substation, that was going to replace, eventually replace, the older model at the Paramount switchgear. This here is for, solely for the switchgear itself. That's all it is, that'll go to the, that's to replace the Paramount, no, it's to go into the Northeast Substation, that's going to replace the thirty-year-old Paramount switchgear.
Yeah, so this is the, this is the switchgear that will go into the Paramount building.
This is going into Paramount building, because we did get the switchgear that was finally delivered.
One thirty-eight.
That was late, that we're concerned about. So, I guess the, the history of it is, is that we will be getting, that that switchgear will, the old one, thirty-one, will be abandoned eventually when Northeast comes online, this is strictly for the switchgear at the Paramount, for the replacement of the, the old one. Now, I'm getting kind of confused, Gary. So I thought the old one was, was going to be abandoned, we had the one that's eighteen years old, we're going to keep, and we're putting a new switchgear at the Northeast that would replace the old one.
So there are, and, and first of all, the exhibit which is attached to this resolution was actually an exhibit that came from a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
And again, I apologize, I believe Rahat just grabbed the wrong PDF file when this was, when this was posted, and we'll get the right exhibit to council, so the memo is correct, and, and I'll, I'll clarify now, so there are the transformers at the substations, and then there's the, the switchgear here, which basically is all the controls that controls the transformers. So the, there's two transformers at Paramount, one is the really old one that we've been having problems with, that's the one that'll eventually be abandoned. We just received a brand-new transformer at the Northeast Sub, that'll be the substitute for the one that's going to get abandoned. That transformer is now in place on the pad, and the switchgear at the Northeast Sub is now in place, and now they are just in the final process over the next several weeks of getting that up and running. Now, we're back to the Paramount Substation, remember, one of those transformers is now going to be abandoned, the remaining transformer at the Paramount Substation will be kept, but all the switchgear, all the, all the controls are what you're voting on tonight, those will all be brand-new, controlling that ol, older transformer at Paramount, and that's what this is tonight.
Okay.
The real confusion came in, in that we had already previously approved a few weeks back, the materials, the steel, structural steel, and other materials associated with the Paramount Substation, and that is the attachment that got attached to this. What really should have been attached to this is the switchgear attachment, which is what you're voting on, so we'll get that when Rahat gets back in the office, and, and make sure it's the right attachment when it goes to city council.
So the history of it is, is so I can be clear on it, is, is that we're going to replace that switchgear, but we've, and we approved the building material three weeks ago.
Yep.
And we'll have another one come before us for the actual construction...
You'll still have another one coming before you.
...of that building material that's going to enclose the switchgear.
Yeah, I mean, you actually think a couple more contracts associated with this project that'll still come to you.
Okay. Any questions for Gary?
This is all the interior stuff that's going to be inside to basically upgrade all the switchgear, so that, you know, squirrels and raccoons and other stuff can't...
There's not experts.
Yeah, so physically tonight, you're, you are, physically tonight, you're purchasing, like, the high-voltage computers, if you will, that are going inside the building...
Right.
...to run all the stuff.
Okay. Because I think that that's something important to bring up when we get to the council level, that people know that this is part of upgrading the system, not just replacing worn-out parts, but taking it another step to putting it inside...
They'll all be brand-new and inside.
And inside, so that it's protected.
Yep.
Tony?
I just want to point out one, one typo on the bottom of the memo, there's a one missing on the...
Right.
...figure there.
Understaff recommendations.
Anybody else?
Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Janzit, second by Malley, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, I just have it, we should probably talk about it.
Yeah. It's important to let people know when we upgrade and when we spend a million dollars.
Absolutely.
Okay, next up is Resolution nineteen dash seventy-three dash R, authorizing Portano Construction to install a duct bank for fifteen KV underground circuit upgrade at nineteen ninety-eight McKee Street for Raising Kane, and fourteen twenty-five and fourteen seventy-five Nagel Boulevard for new development for the amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency amount.
This is, just as Gary says it in the memo, nothing special, we're just providing power, basically running cable underground for the new Raising Kanes, they require power that's not there, and same for the two facilities that are being built, they're spec buildings on Nagel Boulevard. Anybody have any questions?
So, there's power on site, it's just upgraded.
There's, there's power, but it's upgrading it.
And I like the, the layout work shows in the memo of the individual splits between the developers and what we're paying, so that people understand that, you know, we're not fronting all of this.
No, we have some paid, we, our infrastructure's what we're going to cover, the cost of that.
Yeah, thank you, I wanted to point that out, that developers do pay for their electrical...
It's good to see that listed out, so that people can see that as well.
And we can also recoup them from future development in the areas.
Okay.
Just to be, just to be clear, this is not extending the electric service to the, what would be the south half of that lot, where we have not yet done any new development or planned development, correct?
Correct.
Does it make sense to look at that work now, since we would already have the machinery out there?
So when, no, well, that particular work, we can't look at now, because there's no plan.
Okay.
We, we, there's absolutely no plan for that, but we're, we look at things from a big picture, we know that that field is not going to just be a field, so when we do a design like this, we, we take into account the fact that one day, it's going to get developed, so...
So we are planning for that?
We were planning for that, and I'll point right down the street here to the Walgreens, when the Walgreens went in, we did other work out there, so that as that begins to redevelop one day, it's already going to be ready to go. We do that as a regular course of, of action.
Okay. Anybody else, questions? Anybody wish to make a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion by Janzit, second by Knop, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it, probably just put that consent.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it's simple stuff.
Uh, next up...
Thank you, Gary.
Is a discussion on construction hours for change request on Kirk Road. Would either one of the aldermen from the first ward like to talk about that?
Well, I, I can, I mean, if you want to introduce it...
Yeah, just to introduce the topic, that we were contacted by Kane County Division of Transportation, and they have a request with regard to the resurfacing project that is going to be on Kirk Road, adjacent to our Ward One residential neighborhoods, and it will take place over the course of three to four weeks, the first week will be doing The first week will be doing level binder at night, the second week would be day work to install new loops and then surface at night for the remainder of that three to four-week period. The idea KDOT says is that this would allow them to be twenty-five percent more efficient when it comes to disruption of traffic during high-volume hours on Kirk Road. Of course, you know, it's going to be noisy construction work that occurs between eight PM and, and four AM, so they asked us to consider it, they even said that they haven't, you know, come to any decision on it, they're mulling it over internally, but they would like to hear Batavia's input before they make any final determination.
So, with that in mind, I posted some things on social media just to make people aware that, put up the trial balloon, and that trial balloon was shot down several times. So, I think, we have folks here that wanna maybe speak into it, but I got several phone calls, several emails from people that they were, they were frustrated, number one, just number one, they're not seeing people out there during the day working on it, so they were struggling with, with them working on it at night. And they were, you know, they were concerned just from staging as well, staging of trucks in their cul-de-sacs, and then obviously the, the noise, you know, with kids and everything. So, lots of concerns, so, but if you, if you folks want to come up and speak to it, please.
So, I, I would agree with you, I mean, I would think, you know, it's, it's tough enough on, on Kirk Road trying to navigate Kirk Road today, and it's gonna drag on, but I don't think, you know, we should have that imposition on the residents who live near there, because it's gonna be quite an imposition, and, and as one of the emails I got said, you know, people have small children, well, they don't ever get any sleep, and so.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna begin by thanking whoever owns the City of Batavia Ward One Facebook group, that was basically our notification of this change. I don't know if there should be a better way of notifying the residents. Your phone is run, people, messages has been left.
Yeah.
You know what's happening. My name is Dave Reiswitz, I live on the end of Roxbury Court, that's one block north of Fine Street. I work from home, so basically, I'm constantly looking out the street, and basically, I like to say that, that's my street. If something not right, I don't hesitate to call nine eleven. Look up the records and you'll find. Here's my, I also represent a share of concerns of a couple neighbors who have small children, and that's the crux of the issue. So, on June fourth, while I'm in meetings, I notice builders' asphalt trucks coming down Roxbury and turning around. Okay, first one, I figure that's a mistake, bad GPS, who knows? I did call BPD, I'm not aware of anything that happened. I did raise a concern about kids. Fast forward a couple hours, at eleven thirty-five, we saw another truck. I called again, reiterated my concern about the kids, and basically, here's my stats. We have over twenty kids on that cul-de-sac, between the age of three and fifteen, who play in the street. Now, I know what you're gonna tell me, don't play in the street. Guess what? It's a cul-de-sac. Okay? That's why people buy, you know, homes on these streets. So, I mean, that's not right. So, officer did come out, I forget the officer's name, but he did listen to my, my guidance, and I pointed out, all the kids, and trucks and kids on a cul-de-sac do not a good combination make. And I had, I was trying to catch on video, one of the builders' asphalt trucks making not a one-point, not a two-point, but an eight-point turn on, in back of the cul-de-sac. As far as I know, those trucks don't have cameras, okay? That's dangerous. And here's a, a little bit of history for me, I have a dear friend who works in the road, or who worked in the road construction industry, and basically, he was crushed to death by concrete pipe, and basically, you know, that, that's all she wrote. Unrelated, I've made a number of calls to the city engineer for the work like on Larkspur and that area, because some of the larger pipes, when I drove by, had not been blocked to prevent them from moving. So, you know, the last couple times that I drove by, things had improved a little bit, so I'm grateful to the, the engineering staff for taking care of that.
Thank you for calling on that.
Yeah, I mean, like you say, it's, you know, I'm not trying to be, you know, egoist, but that's my street. You know, if I see something that ain't right, don't hesitate. So, that particular day, there were six trucks staged at the end of the block, so needless to say, after the officer's intervention, they quickly disappeared. Here's, here's a couple things. We got no notification of this intended use, surprise to us. I'm thinking whoever set up the bid from KDOT should have been smart enough to not, to include proper staging information in the bid, and to do a proper follow-up. It's unfortunate that I have to be the one to find that. Okay, so I, I understand, you know, we need to get, to get the, the road paved, you know, it's like that colonoscopy that we all put off, oh, you gotta do it. But, it has to be done in a safe manner, and I won't tolerate that nonsense. And, you know, I've told every neighbor that I told, if you have an issue, call BPD without hesitation. So, chief, I'm sorry you're not here, but if you get some calls, you'll understand why. So, obviously, concerns about nighttime, what's the staging gonna be? Where are these trucks gonna go? They better not go on any residential street, okay? They better not be on Woodland Hills, that's already a death zone. Every time I walk on that, I think back to, what, ten, eleven, twelve years ago, to a gentleman named Edward Cook, who took the life of a man walking his dog. So, I take this stuff, like I say, very seriously. Paving is not a silent operation. You're gonna hear trucks, you're gonna hear beeps, you're gonna hear the backups, you're gonna hear the vibrations. I'm already in trouble for my wife, who won't be able to sleep those days. Not my fault, but, you know, those of you that are married, you understand. Am I right? See, there you go. And safety, I mean, that road is, is a zoo. I mean, I regret, you know, hindsight, voting against photocap eons ago, you know? So, today, we didn't have any construction activity, cleared core day. Why? What's the scoop? My wife and neighbor just found a blurb from KDOT on the city page that calls for work from seven to nine. Where'd this come about? Where'd that get approved? Why are we having this line item in this meeting if the work has already been approved? Okay, something, we need some answers on that. And then, obviously, did the KDOT bid cover truck staging? You know, did the city see any of that? And did Batavia see any of that? And were approvals given? So, we got some things here I'm just trying to raise that need to be addressed. All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. So, I don't think anything has been approved yet as far as overnight, because they want to.
They just want feedback.
Yeah.
I, you know, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the council feels, but I'm not really keen on approving that, especially when we've already got issues with where they're staging trucks, and, you know, the communication is really not there from KDOT on this project. And they've got a couple of them going right now that are real traffic nightmares for our city. Dan?
Curious about what the sound level is of the particular tasks that they're looking to do versus the regular sound of truck traffic. I say this because I rented a house off of Kirk Road back in my twenties, I know exactly what that sounds like, and I remember what the roadwork sounded like. But that said, there were some activities they were able to accomplish that were not noisy, that probably pushed them ahead. I'm curious.
I want them out there grinding.
That's different.
That would, that would be completely unacceptable.
So, there was a grinder out there at, you know, two in the morning, that would be problematic, but I don't have a problem with someone painting at three in the morning, whatever.
Yeah, I think they've listed to us leveling binder and surfacing, those are operations that you'll have vibratory rollers, you'll have truck packing.
Yeah.
You'll have light plants.
Never mind, never mind.
You know, I, from, I'll throw my pure engineer's hat, it's great, it's efficient, we can gain twenty-five percent by doing.
Not, not for that human.
Throw on my father's hat with a young child at home?
Nope.
My young child's gonna be up all night listening to vibratory rollers, so.
Yeah. Yeah. And I appreciate what they're trying to do, but it just, you know, and I, you know, the, just reading the threads of the emails, it wasn't like, hey, this is what we wanted, they were, they were just kind of testing the waters to see.
Exactly.
I, I think the waters are full of shark, so, you know, that's not.
I guess my suggestion would be when it's a really nice, bright, sunny day, they should be out there working for that.
Agreed.
And they should be working on Saturdays, Sundays when there's not as much traffic.
I don't know, we don't have any really kind of day-to-day interaction.
I know there was stuff going on further south on Kirk, I don't know if that was them or not, but, because traffic was all backed up down that end of the way.
Okay, I think I have an idea of what kind of feedback to provide.
Idea.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down.
Those are a lot of information.
Thanks for being patient and waiting.
Things for us to follow up on as well, so I really appreciate you taking your time. Thank you. Absolutely.
Okay, moving on to project status.
Okay, we have a few projects, I just wanted to highlight a few. Last Thursday on June sixth, our staff from Community Development, Economic Development, also with staff from Main Street, took a little expedition to Muskegon, Michigan, and Alderman Callahan joined us as well to follow up on an idea that he had previously presented about the pop-up chalet businesses that they have there. Members of their city staff met with us, spent more than two hours with us as we peppered them with questions and looked with great interest upon the project that they have there. I believe they started with eight, and they are now up to seventeen of these chalets, and they view the program as a success, both in the fact that they have always been able to fill one hundred percent of the chalets every year, but they have also seen, I think, three businesses that have moved into a brick-and-mortar location in their downtown, which is excellent, but they also said something they did not anticipate, are that other out-of-town businesses that have brick-and-mortar locations have rented chalets for the summer to see if maybe the next location they might want to open up is in Muskegon, Michigan. And something that was very encouraging when we asked them, what do you attribute the success to? Because you could say, boy, they get a lot of tourism there, being right on the coast of Lake Michigan, but their very first response was, it's adjacent to our farmer's market, which is a huge regional draw. They were actually very proud of the fact that they get ten to twelve thousand visitors to their Saturday farmer's market, and it's the largest farmer's market outside of the Detroit metro area. But, that was, that really impressed us because the area where we had identified where these chalets might be possible here in Batavia is on North River Street, and of course, that is adjacent right next to our very popular regional draw, farmer's market. Does anybody have any questions about that? I think what we came away with was being encouraged that there was definitely the possibility that Batavia could support this type of project here. We wanted to start, on the one hand, small, but start with a sufficient number of these that they would be a draw. You know, you can't start with just one isn't enough of a draw for a pack of shoppers to visit, you have to have enough to make it interesting. So, our next step is to investigate the cost of the project and then to bring a formal proposal back to both this board and to the Main Street Board.
So, it, it sounds awesome, but my question is, so, from a practicality standpoint, how do they rent these out? I mean, obviously, they're on a seasonal basis, but is it like a keeper league? Do you get to be able to rent it again the next year if you, you know, if, if you have right of first, you know, first refusal or?
You know, those are things that they have had their businesses come back season after season. However, this is only the third year that they have them, and they're sort of looking at an option, do they want to have it be a keeper league? Or do you want to have a certain amount be a keeper league and a certain number to change? So, depending on, on what we decide, we could have the program run either way.
Yeah.
So, we don't really have incubators anymore, is the thought that these could be used as incubators, or were they mostly meant to be?
Definitely.
Self-contained?
I think they're definitely a type of incubator business, you know, for the, kind of a specialty retail perspective, this is a great incubator.
Yeah.
Model, but, you know, we could have something else that's similar to an eighteen seventy-one situation like the City of Chicago has, which is a shared space, shared resources for the, the non-retail type of business as well, so many different ideas.
Marty?
Yeah, so, when I brought it up, it was, in going there, it's exactly like I pretty much figured it was going to be, and I think there's a lot of similarities, but there's a lot of differences that are going to be unique for us, and those questions that you're bringing up are going to be what's going to kind of make this a success for our town, because while they're, they've got a little more tourism, they're a little bit bigger city, but they're also not as established in the downtown, so you're kind of trying to pull more people in, we would have it more as a complement to our already bustling downtown, where it would just add to it. I know that it kind of blew my mind about how the quality of it is going to be key. They really put the touches on it that made the difference. They didn't just buy some houses and plunk it down, they thought about it, they thought about all the available space to make sure that you're maximizing why people go and want to walk to something and to shop there. I know, I spent a lot of money.
And you can buy marijuana, books.
Marijuana, books?
Yeah. Because it's legal there, and it was.
Books.
Books.
Right.
Books.
But, yeah, on all of that, one of the, you know, you talk about you don't know what it's going to take off, one of the people that have, The Soap Dude, they had The Soap Vending Place.
The Soap Dude.
That was what the place is called, The Soap Dude.
That's his trademark name?
Mm-hmm.
The, The Soap Dude.
Okay.
And, right now, that's actually probably my favorite soap, and they were kind of saying they would love to set up another retail shop and kind of franchise it out, and I'm like, oh, seriously? But, you know, that's for them to decide, but I could see definitely it working out for our community, just the same way, because I think we're going to have, I think we're gonna have people fighting over spots, just like kind of they are. I think we've got a, a lot of creative people in town that would fill that up, even if they had to share it, we're not going to have empty spaces. And I think it's going to be, density's going to be key. I think we've learned probably eight is what we probably should do to make sure that it succeeded. The interesting thing will be the right mix of retail components with food. Food also has to be a draw, and they're not gonna be able to make on premises, but if you have a place, as there were like two or three there, that are mini bakeries, people bring their food and under, in kind of the craft kitchen licenses, they will, they will sell out all day long, and I kind of think some of the, the farmer's market vendors that we already have there, instead of coming up and setting up shop every week, we're gonna have some.
Gonna open the door.
That are turnkey, yep.
And I think that is a really good thing for an incubator space, because it may take somebody like that that starts out there, the small brewery or whatever, that just has the one day a month where they're letting stuff out, and then they develop that following, or they develop the, the desire for people to want that, and then they decide, you know what, I need a physical, real building in town, I need a real sales.
And even if the size of that entity was not big, maybe they don't become the big incubator business, it might satisfy that kind of niche that we are needing for all different sizes of business, gives us more opportunities.
Nick?
Was the front facade consistent?
That's, so.
Yeah.
We talked about that, that they could have done this, they could have done that.
Could have been.
They changed things out, they built them all themselves, and they sited them, they sited them differently, they put.
Right.
Cedar shake on some and regular siding on others, but they did it all the way around. Then they decorated. they did it all the way around. Then they decorated sitting spots between the houses. They had said, they had wished, maybe they pushed them together so it wouldn't take up as much space, but for us, I think that would actually make a lot more sense that you have kind of the community draw, and whereas they're near the ocean, us being proximity to the river.
Midwest Ocean.
Yep. It's going to be, it would make much more sense. But the consistency that we did see, there are some masts for ours, are the overhang.
Yeah.
And where they planked out, they just laid some two-by-sixes or stuff like that just out in the front to make it look like a porch. The attention to small little detail like that makes you want to spend money.
Yeah.
I don't care. It had a whole bunch of, it had a whole bunch of different stores there.
Really?
But I think I bought something from at least eighty-five percent of them. I don't even know what I was buying on some. I'm like, oh, I'm going to take this one, because it's just fantastic.
Bunch of open books.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought some of the best pictures that you guys took and shared were also the kind of the public realm spaces, the beachy area, the ping pong, the little bar station, you know, making sure that we're addressing the whole place and making it an experience that you can come, you know, in between spending lots of money, that there's places to, to gather, to hang out, for kids to run around. And if anybody, this weekend will be a great opportunity if you have questions about what kind of vendors might go in there. There's an artisan market Friday night on River Street, and then the Artisan Collective that comes the third Saturday of every farmer's market sets up that whole block between Spring and State Saturday morning. So, Friday night, the, the woo-nurf will be shut down, Saturday morning will be shut down with these artisans. I mean, the Artisan Collective turns away artisans, and we have a, a waiting list for these groups that want to get in, because we've had a very successful event now running for, for years. So, there are, there are, I can speak to that, there are plenty of people that I'm sure will be happy to take a chalet.
One of the things they mentioned too, I wanted to talk about the time period. So, they say that people go to visit the farmer's market first thing in the morning, and then they make their way through the farmer's market, and they say, well, the shops are right there. Before we go home, let's just check out what's in the shop. And before they know it, it's lunchtime and they're a little hungry, so they go wander downtown, and they end up sitting down at one of the restaurants in their downtown area. And so, that flow works out extremely well, so that it's not only a good thing standalone, it is a complement to the other things that are going on in their downtown.
Question, for, for those artisans that might take a chalet, do we have a wait, is there a waiting list for people to, to get into the farmer's market?
Oh, yeah. We turn away weekly vendors, we turn away seasonal vendors, and then there's a waiting list for the artisan collective, which is, the registration is all separate.
That's awesome.
So, oh, go ahead.
The electric, they talk about a benefit for our electricity. That was one of the things that they were like, oh, we wish we had more knowledge about this or that, about equipping it with the right amount. And I'm like, well, that's not going to be a problem for us.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Because we're going to have all of that built in, and we're going to have the, the means, rather than just kind of, like you say all the time, we, it's our own, so we're going to be able to, to right-size it, and that's, that's one of their takeaways. So, their takeaways, we've already got solutions for, so we kind of benefit from their three years of trial and error, but there wasn't many error. And that's why those things that were error, we already do, and I think it's just going to be kind of a seamless.
Other comments? Any other questions?
So, next thing we'll bring back is a proposal. Abby, did you want to say something?
Yeah, the only thing I'm excited about too is that someday, because right now, we have such a fabulous farmer's market, we've got so much foot traffic on River Street, is to see the sprinkle extend into other areas, that we have a lot of holes in our downtown.
We do.
To get some of that traffic moving off of River Street, those Saturday mornings or any other day. I've got all sorts of maps in my head on where they should go.
No doubt.
One thing at a time.
And I'll just say, to piggyback onto that, that I believe River Street is, is a, is a good success for our city, is that I'll be gone, but that the council members who are here carry River Street down to Spring Street.
Yes.
And after one Washington place is completed, that, that woo-nurf idea and that streetscape idea should go up to Washington Street upstate.
Absolutely.
It just screams for that to happen.
Yes.
And tie it in. And I think, you know, people on, on the council has, have that vision, that we should see that happen in the next few years.
Something I didn't mention is the, the chalets are portable. That's the cool thing about it, is you can keep moving them to different areas that you would like to attract attention to and see, you know, something to do in between two areas that are happening. So, yeah, it's a very cool aspect to it as well. So, I spent kind of a long time on that one, but it's kind of an exciting proposition for our downtown, so. The other thing that we're working on is we had someone who had purchased land and plans to put a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand square foot spec building on it, ask us to assist them with the planning of a groundbreaking ceremony, which is kind of a nice thing to collaborate with the, the developer on that. And then it'll also give us a, a good deal of publicity as they market that property to demonstrate that Batavia is a place for business growth and development. And also, Economic Development, Community Development, Public Works and Communication are going to be working on a campaign to attract high electric users to our industrial area. There are a number of, of things that we can provide, being our own electric utility, that make us very competitive. As well, we were talking about improvements being made to the Paramount Northeast Substation. That too is really something that is an attraction for us. You partner those things together with the incredible development that we're seeing in other areas of the community, such as new subdivisions that are coming here and the future project at Fermilab. We can put quite a portfolio together to be able to attract those type of businesses to the community.
Our electric is a redundant system, and so, that is such a salable point.
It really is.
That, that, you know, and there are so many, you know, venues, there's so many magazines out there for all kinds of businesses that we should try to get into, to get these businesses to set up shop in Batavia.
And then finally, I'd just like to, I'm sorry that Chief Yule is, is not here, but I do want to give kudos to our police department who provided their support and participation this past weekend in the Special Olympic Games. That is something that the Batavia Police Department has always done fundraising for, participated in year after year, and they, they, they both had a good time, and they also did very good deeds, so, just want to call them out for that. And that's all I have, unless somebody has a question about a particular project I can provide more information on.
Anybody? Anybody want to talk about fireworks?
Fireworks.
We waited for the end to have fireworks.
Yeah, well, it's war two. So, with everything that we have ever had in this community as far as One North Washington, Campana, Chickens, anything, I have never received as many phone calls or emails than this topic this fast. And for those that are listening, it's not even clear. But to clarify some of the misconceptions that are out there, this is not tax dollar money, this is not the city putting it on, it's none of those things. It would only be if there was a plan to us for a permit to be issued. That's the only city say in this at all. But in light of that, kind of like what was being solicited earlier is, kind of have heard a lot of advice for those that may have designs on fireworks, and they may not have any with sound, is kind of what I'm hearing from all, I don't know anybody in the neighborhood that said it was supportable on their part. And normally, you would have something, but this one has been completely and one hundred percent clear, they don't want it. They understand it, some have differing opinions about what money should be spent on, or why you're doing it, but just from, and those things are all, you know, those things are all decisions for whoever wants to do it, value judgments, but when it comes to like noise and what we can control, we're being asked not to.
And I guess from my standpoint, and a lot of the questions that I've got, one, I was really surprised to see some of the responses today on social media that the boosters knew nothing about it or not involved with it. The second thing is, remember, this is for maybe seven games out of the year. And any of the Saturday games, of course, wouldn't really make a whole lot of sense to do it if it was during the day. So, it's not a huge occurrence, it's not anywhere close to what the Cougars do. That being said, yeah, I think I'm in support of it, but I'd have a much easier time supporting if I knew they were raising money, say, to rebuild the stands that have been out there since I was in high school. I think that, to me, is probably one of the biggest things that has come out of all the conversations that I've had in the last two days, is where's the money coming from and why do they want to do it? So, that's, that's really the feedback that I've gotten. And then most of it, including my wife, is no. My four dogs hate it.
I'm siding with your wife right.
She called her alderman or complimented her alderman today.
She did.
I think everyone.
Always give her Marty's number.
She knows where to get things done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I put it on my list, and my list is a little long. Dan?
I was going to say, it's a wall of no.
Yeah.
Now, one person has said, this is, this is something they're in favor of. I'm heartbroken, I, as a graduate, as someone who would love to see the celebrations, I get it, I understand their point. I see it's only seven, seven games or whatever. It's a wall of no.
I think if there was, I think if there was some other opportunities out there, that there is some compromises that I think people are requesting, and some of those could be maybe, just like some of the other communities do, at halftime during homecoming, you know, as a more single event, if people want, we can't control what people do with their own money. If some people want to spend it on fireworks, that is entirely their right to do. That's not for us to say no, because we think they ought to be spending it on something else. That's not, that's not for us to decide. But what we're hearing is, every game is too much. After every touchdown is a complete, and these aren't, these are people that love, breathe, eat, sleep Batavia that are saying, if we're, if we're trying to put it on for that audience that would be the big rah-rah cheerleaders, and they're going, yeah, not for me, then it's kind of missing the mark, and it just needs to be reevaluated.
And there have been other schools that have done it, and it's usually either a playoff game or a real big rivalry game, homecoming, that type of thing, senior night. I mean, it's been done by a bunch of other schools at different times, but it's not a regular occurrence. I mean, the only one that was ever regular was DeKalb always, has always had a cannon. I mean, that goes all the way back to when I was in school. They had a cannon out there and they shoot the cannon off.
Mike?
Yeah, I just had some people bring up the same thing, Marty. There's a lot of other entertainment during halftime. The band entertains, the cheerleaders entertain, the dancing entertains, and who wants to take away from that for the fireworks? We got a lot of other things to look forward to.
Nick?
I, I heard nothing but negatives, so I thought, I'll try to balance it off and poll my children. Two are Batavia graduates, and one, one goes there. Two are, are voting constituents, so I had to really listen. But I was surprised, none of the, I thought it would, for sure, they'd be like, oh, that'd be awesome, like, I'm all for it, but it wasn't. Like, I don't know who's really all for this, but I was surprised that they weren't. And, and my daughter especially was, well, why don't they do it for all the sports then? Which brought up a whole nother topic, and we went down a, a road, but it, it was interesting. I, I don't know who's really for this, other than, you know, obviously, the booster club, but.
Well, and that was the strange thing to me, is from a booster member that's in, I think, the governing body, they weren't part of this. They weren't the driving force. It's not them trying to raise money. So, I, I definitely want more information. Again, I think if it was part of a fundraiser to raise funds to rebuild the stands or whatever, I can understand it more. If it's just because somebody wants to give money because they want to have fireworks at the game, eh, then it's a harder sell to me. And I'm kind of the big cheerleader out there. Yes.
As, as long as we're bringing up the negative, I just want to share with you, I got some real negative after our last meeting last week about the presentation about the needles. And I mean, I really had some people in my face who lost children through use of needles, have asked me that if it ever comes up again, where they hope we publicize it, and we're going to have a discussion about it, because they like to come down here and tell you to your face what their family went through because needles got used by their children. So, there was some really negative feelings about that. I got waylaid over at the farmer's market on Saturday, and the folks were very upset, and I had, ended up having to kind of walk them off the grounds there and talk to them kind of in a private situation. But that one's got two sides to it, and I just wanted you all to know that there's some people that are really, got some very high opinions about whether or not it's legal and everything else. And the police department's got some views on it too, that I think you should hear if you really want to have a further discussion. I think that the comment that was made that got some people's ire was the fact that somebody suggested that maybe they should try to get some grants from it. And there was, and there's some folks wanting to charge after that idea and, and signip, submit alternative ideas about giving that grant. So, just so you know, that, that's out there, and there's some people very fired. I mean, I understand, because it was personal to these people and they lost children. And that was right in the wrong place and the wrong face, so.
I know, it's really tough. I mean, my first thought on seeing that, and when I first heard about it, was this is part of just enabling the situation. And then I started to try to research it and look into what could be benefits from it. And I think, you know, with the right funding, with the right, you know, sources and information available to people, I think you can see the benefits that could come out of it. I think for one person to try to do it out of their pocket is just crazy. I just don't see that that, you know, to fall on one person's shoulders to try to do that, I think is just monumental task. Now, if it becomes something where you can try to divert those people to get help, or when they ask for it, you can point them in the right direction to provide help, I think that's a good thing. So, that's why I asked the questions that I did during that, you know, discussion, because I felt like I have to find a positive in it. I, you know, I have, one of my son's personal friends died because of an overdose, so I know firsthand what that does to somebody and what it does to a family. So, I really feel like, you know, if there's something that we can do that can help that situation, and if that's just even having a safe place where somebody can come in and get rid of their needles instead of leaving them behind the liquor store or McDonald's or wherever, I think it's a good thing. So, I think we have to try to focus on the positives, and that's the way I've responded to people that have said something to me, you know, well, you're just trying to let somebody in town to enable that, you know, drug habit to go on. Well, you know what, if they get one person to get in contact with somebody to get clean at some point, it's a success.
I just, on that, the, I fully understand that, because, I mean, I've cleaned up enough of those bodies myself to kind of know exactly what it's like and deal with the other side. The part that is the most important thing to understand about it is at least we're talking about it as a whole, which is the use of narcotics that wraps people and it takes away their choices. We think that it's a choice, because that's, none of us are going through that. So, we don't fully understand it. And there is absolutely no right or wrong way, because there are people that are going to be upset because someone died, and there are going to be people that are furious with us for not doing something when their family members die. We need to have the conversations about options, we need to talk about it, we need to make sure that people are okay with letting the, the hurt that is going on with it, that their family members died, and their family members died for no reason in their minds, and no one saved them, and no one talked to them. And that is devastating for them, so they're going to hold a lot of that anger. They're also probably mad at their family members. They're also probably mad at their family member that passed. They're mad at the police for not doing anything. They're mad at us, because their family member's gone. And I think all of us have experienced enough heartbreak with close family members ourselves that we know that grief is intensely painful and intensely personal to all of us. But to ignore the conversation, which is, let's start talking about drug use and what the impacts of that are, because it spreads to so many other things, it's not just the addiction itself, it's not, just not that family, it's the economic impact to a community, it's the health to that community, it's to the, the social moire of what a community is. And if you can't talk about it and you ignore it, this, God, this isn't the 50s anymore. You need to talk about it, because otherwise people just die alone and hopeless.
I have to commend, and I know it's a sensitive subject, I totally get that, but I have to commend her for the passion that she had to come in here and talk about this, you know, and I'll be honest, you know, I was kind of, at first, I'm kind of like, eh, but there's a line that she shared, that she loved these people enough to do this. And that, that kind of rocked my world a little bit. It really did. And to Marty's point, it's something that we need to discuss. This, it can't be taboo, it cannot be, you know, put her under the rug, I mean, these are things that we have to talk about. It's uncomfortable, it really is, but we have to talk about it, because people are dying because we're not talking about it. So I commend her for going over to the coroner's office and sitting in her car and doing this. It is not an easy thing, and I, I 100% respect, and, you know, those people that they've lost, they've lost kids and loved ones to overdoses, but, you know, and that's terrible, and I can't appreciate that, but we have to talk about it.
I think that was a complaint, or not a complaint, the suggestion is, is if you're going to have a discussion about this, bring everybody into the room that's been touched by it, and not just make it one voice in the room.
Yeah.
Well, I applaud that young lady. I think, you know, she had a lot of courage, and I think she was here looking for help. She wasn't looking for accolades, she was looking for support and for help and seeing where she can get help, like you're saying, grants and things, maybe we can help her, somebody who was listening on TV can give her assistance to continue her one-person program right now. And that doesn't mean we minimize the loss of people, you know, and of their loved ones. I mean, it's, it's a tragic thing, but this is, what she's doing is not enabling anyone to take drugs. She's keeping them alive, keep trying to keep them healthy, because a lot of people don't have access to drug, to needles, so they, they use them, they, they use friends and they transfer all kinds of diseases, and, and that's a death sentence. So I honestly applaud her, and, and I've, not that I've been there personally, but I know people, I grew up in inner-city Brooklyn, New York, I'm a ghetto kid, and, and I've known people since I was 10 years old dying, and it's, it's a terrible thing to happen to a community. It lessens the community. And above all, the, so, I, I, I just think, these are human beings who have an illness. It's all they have, they have an illness, they have an addiction, and we need to support those people any way we can, not enable it, not enable them to drugs, but we need to support them, because they are fellow human beings. And so, and I don't think it's a tough conversation to have, conversation's going to be simple to have. We're talking about people and people's lives, and trying to give them an opportunity to make choices again, because their choices have been stripped from them by the use and addiction to these drugs.
You know, Mr. Mayor, the, the point you just brought up about people wanting to be included in the conversation, that's exactly what the purpose of bringing someone in initially is. You've got to start the conversation with someone. I don't care who starts it, but if anybody thinks that that was a discussion, and look at us, look how nice we are, then shame on us for not continuing the conversation. The only one, the only ones that actually have the authority to kind of pull everybody together and say, talk about it, is us, because that's what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be reaching out to those people, and if they, people want to come to us and talk more and add more, that continues the conversation, it doesn't stop, and that's what it needs to continue to be built upon.
Can we do that? Do we do that? Can we, can we organize?
Yep.
I think you legally, there's some issues whether or not you could legalize some types of activity here. I question whether you think you have that ability. I don't know if you do.
No, 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 I don't think there's anything that we're talking about legalizing, you know, where she's doing it is within the county, and she gets the approval for it at the county. There's apparently some legislation on the state level, which goes to, that's the state's purview to do. All we need to do is to be like 2-1-1, which is make sure that we're giving people the options of where to go.
She wasn't asking us for an ordinance.
Nope, she didn't at all.
She was screaming for help.
Yep.
I did speak with her after the meeting. She is a fully legal 501(c)(3), she did not even have a bank account set up to receive donations. She needs, she needs our help. We need to invite her back. This is worthy of an entire cow. This is worthy of an entire town hall meeting that we have, we have discussed. And Mr. Mayor, please invite anybody.
Yes.
Who, who was angry with, with you or for me for recommending that they go after CRA grants, which is fully within their purview to get, because we do need to hear that point of view. That makes this, the discussion ever stronger.
And I would welcome that committee meeting or separate town hall type meeting, you know, because I agree, this is a conversation piece that should continue, much the same as we were, you know, very adamantly professing our support of mental health in the past, and, and I shared a story after that where I was, I was very adamant that I was not willing to let that just be empty rhetoric. I think this is the same thing. If we're serious about this and we recognize that this is an issue out there and happening, actively happening, then we should welcome the conversation and continue the conversation here, welcoming, please.
I don't know about anybody else, but last week, for me, was, 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 was just, was uplifting. I mean, that, that woman came before us, that young lady, and, and told us her story, and I thought, what a wonderful person, that she cares about human people that way. And the gentleman before her, the, the black man who came from Aurora, who was supporting and sponsoring the LGBTQ parade, and he, and everyone said, well, you must be gay. No, I'm not gay, my wife's not gay, my kids aren't gay. These are people we're talking about that, that deserve it, of their human rights, their, their equal rights. And I, and I just applaud that man. And I went home to my wife, I said, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to get that guy's number, I'm going to say, how can I help you do this again?
I'm sorry.
Yes, I know, I asked.
I saw him on Sunday and I shared your sentiment, he was happy.
So, but that was uplifting to me, that we have people in our community, I mean, who actually, I mean, I talk about it, words are cheap, these people actually living it. And I just, I just had this great feeling that, you know, there is light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not an oncoming train, you know, that they're, they're all wonderful people.
So given that words are cheap, and we've talked about doing a meeting, is that something, will someone send behind me to?
Absolutely.
Because I would love to get, from all sides, it needs to be informed, I mean, people need to know the dangers of what, what could happen.
Yep.
Coroner needs to be here.
And people need to know where they can get this stuff. The coroner needs to be here. This is.
Sheriff.
State's Attorney's Office.
I, I mean, it's, it's well worth having all sides of the conversation at the table.
I'm not arguing.
No, no, no. I just don't want you to get hijacked at the farmer's market again.
Get cornered, you do get cornered.
Right, absolutely. There were, these people were, you know, very upset, thinking it very personally, and had a different dynamic in their life than what some of the rest of us have had, so. I mean, I just want you to know that there's other sentiments that are floating around out there, and I thought maybe some of you may have been confronted with them the past week, as I was. I have no problem with the idea of continuing the conversation and bringing in some experts in here to have a conversation about it, but.
Yeah, I think this, this problem or this issue is a lot bigger than chickens or fireworks or anything else that we really talk about here, you know?
I mean, I think the police will tell you, drugs is a very serious issue, and I mean, I don't.
I think the stat was, I think, what, six deaths in like eight days or something in Kane County from overdoses? I mean, it's something we can't ignore.
It's not getting better.
Yeah. And if we don't talk about it, it still happens.
Yep. What else?
Is there any others? Any, anybody else have anything else?
Got something positive under other. I, I had a chance to chat with Chairman Lawson. He renewed his commitment to reviewing the Fabian Bridge and the traffic situation that was over there. He is definitely on board, and I guess he said he was looking forward to giving your office a call, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, he was up there this afternoon, after we were there.
Excellent, wonderful. It's so encouraging that the number of people on social media have complained, that, you know, Channel 2 News showed up, that the Chronicle writes stories, that we all continue to talk about it. This is not a dead issue. It feels disingenuous to put lipstick on that bridge right now with the work that they're doing, because it is not fixing the actual problem, but it's encouraging that that is moving forward.
A multimillion-dollar project, and it needs at least 60 feet of the Campana.
Well, you should ask him for his charts of how he saved the county $62 million in property taxes. He can find ways to help us, help us pay for, for all that, and I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And then one, one other, other thing, budget discussions coming up in the fall, we've got plenty of time between now and then. Let's find us some meeting that the agenda is light. It would be a great opportunity to talk about our contribution to Main Street. I would love to hear what the financials look like, because we had talked about it last year about reviewing the situation. Let's take time and give it the attention that it deserves, maybe invite Chris or maybe the board in at some point. It'd be great for a joint meeting when we have things light one night.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
No one has anything else?
What's going on with the Gateway Project?
As a matter of fact, we were just, had a meeting with Business Today on, to talk about the availability of that grant, and then I have another one tomorrow with another business. So it's on a weekly basis, we get a couple of inquiries about that, so it, it seems to be working very well. The, it was good to send the letters out, because I think that sending the letters directly to them, that has really gotten a good response.
So you have requests coming in now?
Yes.
For the funds?
Yes.
So we'll be releasing funds after we determine the viability of whatever project?
Right.
Second question. What is happening with the signage that's coming into the city? Were you discussed about that?
Yes, so in order to put an RFP out for those entryway signs, we need to have, you know, an appropriate drawing, so we have contracted with a landscape architect to provide that drawing, and then once that is complete, then we can send out the RFP.
We are moving forward with it, because it was approved.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. We're hoping to get at least two of them installed this year. That's, that's the goal.
Yeah, just so everybody probably knows already, but let me remind you, this coming Friday night, we're going to have a big party down here, the 103rd birthday of Flag Day, which was started in Batavia for all intents and purposes, and the community band's going to play, and they're going to do some new features of design down here that haven't previously been done. We're going to be wrapping all the tree, trunks around here in red, white and blue colored lights. And then there's going to be a luminary of 103 candles on the Riverwalk. So from about 7:30 till about 10, it should be a pretty area down here.
Very good.
Come on down.
And I'll let you know with your discussion that you had with my boss the other day, he spent the afternoon cleaning up the site you were talking about.
I thought I was going to come up and do it.
It's done. Will barrels full out of there, he cleaned it all up today. He went over and took, took it upon himself to do that today.
I move, will you, Joe?
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.